If those of you who've been here with us through all the debates, you probably feel like our initial opening, you have memorized, but it's helpful for the people who are viewing it online that may not see the whole thing. We repeat it every time. We're now featuring candidates for Waukam County Council District 5. The farmland district, which covers northwest Waukam County, west of Interstate 5, includes Ferndale and Blaine, plus Point Roberts, Birch Bay, Custer, Marietta, Lummy Island, and the Lummy Reservation. There are two candidates on your ballot for this race. I would like to introduce candidates Ben Ellenboss and Natalie McLendon. The Waukam County Council is the legislative branch of the Waukam County government. The county council is comprised of seven members. One member is elected from each of the five county council districts, and two members are elected as the countywide at-large representatives. The county council exercises its legislative power by adoption and enactment of ordinances and resolutions. Waukam County Council members serve four-year terms, and their annual salary is $35,802. Candidates will each have up to two minutes for an opening statement. They will have one minute to respond to each question, and will make a one-minute closing statement. Each candidate has a challenge card. Can you hold up your challenge cards? We don't have challenge cards.
We are improvising.
Oh, use the bookmarks. Those are your challenge cards. Candidates may use this card to challenge or rebut their opponent's response. The challenging candidate will have 45 seconds to state the challenge, and his or her opponent will have 45 seconds to respond to the challenge. Each candidate may use their challenge card just one time. We have timers Judy Hopkinson and Cindy Bowers seated in the front here. They will be tracking the time. The timers will flash a yellow sign when 15 seconds remain, and a red sign to indicate time is up. If the candidate continues, a bell will be rung, and not signal "Stop Talking." We ask the candidates to be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited amount of time that we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. An important goal of the League of Women Voters is civil discourse. To that end, we also ask that those in the audience be respectful and refrain from comments, as well as hold their applause until the conclusion of a debate. Some questions were prepared by our League Question Committee. We encourage the members of the audience to also provide written questions, which should be addressed to all candidates. Ushers are available to pick up your question and bring them to the screening table. Ushers, wave your hands. They will pick up your cards with your questions, and I believe they have additional cards if anybody needs one. The questions will then be screened by League members Annette Holcomb and Cindy Madigan. They're screening for legibility and clarity, and also to avoid duplication. Each candidate will be asked to respond to the same question during the debate portion. For this debate, candidates roll the dice, and the high-roller had the choice of either going first or having the last closing. And candidate McLendon won the toss and will go last closing. After we start, then, I will alternate which candidate speaks first. So candidate Ellenboss, would you please start with your opening statement?
Hi, my name is Ben Ellenboss, and I just want to point something out. It was said that the 5th district was the farmlands district. The 5th district's the coastal district, and I like to think of it where the farmland meets the our tidelines. I'm a farmer. I work in the industrial area. I live in the rural area. I'm running because every time I turn around, I seem to run into some sort of issue that arises that has originated from a lack of understanding from our county council that's manifested itself in land use policy and other things that I feel could be done better. When I was at Huxley College, or when I was at Western Washington University, I designed my own major through Huxley College of the Environment, because I knew having an understanding of our influence on the natural world would serve me well in the future, and it has. I'm the president of the Foreign Bureau. I'm the vice president of the Cattlemen's Association. I've spent a lot of my adult life striving for common sense solutions to preserving ag land and encouraging a diverse ag economy for Waukam County. I've served on the Waukam County Planning Commission. I've served on the Waukam County Charter Review, and now I'd like to take my experience and on-the-ground experience, as well as policy experience and my education in environmental sciences to bring forth policies that will acknowledge the fact that life takes resources, and it's how we manage those resources that are important. Thank you.
Candidate McLendon, your opening statement, please.
Thank you all for coming, and I understand this is being recorded, and people will see it later. My name is Natalie McLendon. I'm running for the Waukam County Council District 5 coastal district seat. This is a new district, a new seat. Voters will have an opportunity to elect someone new to the council. As a grandmother, I focus every day on how I can make the world better for my, for future generations, and I anxiously awaiting a new generation as we speak. I will work tirelessly to meet the challenges of climate change. We must transition to a clean energy economy while also ensuring clean water for fish, farms, and families, and build shared prosperity. I'm a lifelong environmentalist. I have a degree in environmental politics and economics, and I've been most recently working with the Environmental Caucus of Huayron One, the Water Policy Group. I'm also a small business owner, and as such, I always have to pay attention to market trends and disruptive technology and changing regulations. We all work in some capacity, and so in order to support our families. And we need to build strong communities of 21st century jobs, good wage jobs, affordable housing, and rural broadband, particularly an issue in the 5th district. I've been an activist for all my adult life, and I want to ensure open, accessible, fair process for all who participate, and I would appreciate your support for the 5th district coastal council seat. Thank you.
All right, candidate Ellenboss, we'll start the first question with you. Pardon?
I was just congratulating her on nailing the time frame. I apologize. Natalie and I have been friends for a long time, so we talk.
That's okay. We allow that. What work experience do you think will shape and inform your work for the council if you are the successful candidate?
Work experiences?
Yes.
Like I mentioned in my opening, I'm a farmer. I'm a multi-generational farmer in Waukam County, and I raise grass-fed beef that I then try and direct market to local food enthusiasts. I also work at the Cherry Point Industrial Area in oil refining. I've done that for 18 years. As I've been campaigning, some of the two biggest issues I've been hearing about is the Cherry Point amendments, and how are we going to preserve ag, and water quality issues, and those types of things. And so I feel like my boots-on-the-ground experience can help bring forth regulations that are workable and acknowledge the fact that we need to live and work here in Waukam County.
Candidate McLendon?
So I've been involved in some sort of organization and leadership positions most of my adult life, and I've come to understand that most people are willing to accept decisions that they don't particularly, wouldn't choose, as long as they know that it was an open process, they were heard, and that the process was fair. We have a lot of difficult decisions to make, and no one's going to get everything they want. So the most important thing is to be sure that the process works for everybody, and we've made an effort to reach out to all the stakeholders so that they can understand how the decisions were made and where we go from there, even if it's not something they would prefer.
Candidate McLendon, we'll start this question with you. What experience do you have in working collaborative with people and organizations with whom you disagree strongly?
Strongly is the word I'm not sure about. We're pretty good about sorting ourselves out and avoiding those situations. I would have to go to my leadership in the Waukam County Democrats, also known as a job of herding cats. You know, people who choose to be involved in a political party tend to be, feel very strongly about their positions. That's what made them show up. And in my time as a leader of the party, my goal was to make sure that the, as I talked in the last question, that the process was fair. In fact, many people didn't know who I supported for, like, president, because that wasn't part of the issue. That was not my job. My job was to make sure the process was fair and open for everyone.
Candidate Ellenboss?
Okay, disagree strongly. Okay, let's see if I can think about it. Well, in 2015, I was elected to the Charter Review Commission, and then of the 15-member board, they unanimously elected me to be the chair, to lead the group, and I feel like that speaks to their confidence in my ability to run a fair process and hear everyone, all 15 members' points of view. As far as people I disagree strongly with, Todd Donovan. Well, we'll go there. He was my political science professor at college. I also served with him on the chair, on the Charter Review, and you know, Todd and I can catch up and have a beer and have a conversation. Oftentimes, I disagree strongly with Natalie, and you know, we're still friends, so having a civil conversation is important, and I think that, you know, I think I do that.
We're going to start the next question with candidate Ellenboss. In general terms, what do you think are the causes of insufficient affordable housing in the county?
We only get one minute for this, huh? We'll start with a poor planning process, I think, has put us where we're at. An unwillingness for certain municipalities to own up to their share of the growth. You know, I saw an economic study that said it was based off of 757 new homes. The problem is that we, I've heard numbers of 1,400 to 1,500 new housing units we need every year. Also, the whole notion of not giving housing choices. The Growth Management Act calls for housing choices, and there's certain people who have attacked certain people, like rural residents, on that housing choice. And I think we should encourage housing choices and lead people into different choices, lead people into different options instead of beating them into their choice by stacking and packing in the city.
Candidate McLendon?
So the question about was the causes. First of all, the Great Recession pretty much wiped out the local construction industry, and many people went off and, you know, they had to make a living somehow, so they went off to do something else. We're way behind, and that's a big hard, big cause, is we simply were not building at the rate that we should have been. And the other big cause is that we have people moving here who are not connected to a local job market and coming from higher value places and can pay cash and are basically pricing people out of the market. We have to, and the market hasn't, the private sector hasn't been able to catch up. We need to do something in the public sector.
Candidate McLendon, we'll start with you on this one. It's generally agreed that available mental health services do not meet the need, even for those able to afford private care. What action, if any, do you think that the county should take to increase the availability of such services to the community?
This is a really hard question, because, I mean, to come up with a good answer, I don't know that there is a good solution, but my understanding is the main problem with lack of providers is that they're paid so little, and people can't make a living, particularly in a high-cost town like Bellingham, so they choose to do something else. We, the county has a health department, and we do work with law enforcement and various programs to help people who are on the street who need mental health services. These are crisis situations, but I'm not, I don't know that I have the answer, but I'm certainly, it's a high priority for me to work on looking for outside-of-the-box solutions. Just saw something about training grandmothers to listen. That may seem too simplistic, but it works.
Candidate Ellenboss?
Yeah, and I tend to train grandmothers to listen. I don't laugh at that, because I think, I think family has a lot to do with helping mental health issues, addiction issues, and so, you know, having a, having a strong community and a strong economy, which, you know, doesn't put people in dire situations, is probably as helpful as we can be. You know, counties have budgets, and we have to live within those budgets, but our budgets can only grow with a strong and healthy economy. So as far as our role in the county council, I think you could look at it like, the more prosperous we can make our entire community, the better off everyone will be, and I think solving some of these issues, you got to look to the private, private sector and nonprofits and people to fund those through their jobs.
Candidate Ellenboss, we'll start this next question with you. Would you vote to continue the moratorium at Cherry Point? Why or why not?
The moratorium, I don't think, is the big issue, because I don't see many of the businesses exporting unrefined fossil fuel there. If we're talking about the Cherry Point amendments, comp plan amendments, I would not support them for a myriad of reasons. One, I think they're in a agenda to shut down the refinery on fossil fuel in Waukam County based off of who the authors are, and they're doing it behind closed doors and not in a public setting. And then I also would feel that if your main concern was climate change and reducing global CO2 emissions, an attack on two of the finest facilities in the world is only going to increase global CO2 emissions, and that will not help in our pursuit of reducing greenhouse gases.
Candidate McLendon?
So as Ben said, the moratorium is simply a temporary halt to new permits, so that while the new regulations are being developed, and it's a six-month temporary thing, it will go away once we adopt or not adopt the amendments that are working their way through the process. It's been a very transparent process, unlike what Ben just mentioned about behind closed doors. One document proposal was developed and then presented. I support our efforts to make our local refineries more green. I want to encourage biofuels and things like that.
Thank you.
And I'm out of time.
This next question is related to that, but a different tact, and we'll start with candidate McLendon. The current levels of fossil fuel transportation through rail, pipeline, and shipping will likely continue and may grow. What actions will you take to secure the safety of Waukam County residents and their property, and to protect our natural resources and the environment from potential hazards of transporting fossil fuels?
So because this is about transportation, it's mostly, the jurisdiction is national through interstate commerce or even international, if it's out in the water, so we, or state in terms of budget sound. So I don't know that the county has a huge role to play, but we can certainly have a role as elected officials in communicating with our state and federal elected representatives on the importance of those safety measures. We have, for example, a rescue tug legislation that's fairly new out in the sound to make sure tankers are moving safely through the waters.
Candidate Ellenboss?
I might take a different perspective than, say, someone who doesn't have 18 years of experience in an oil facility. I've served 10 years on the Cherry Point Emergency Response Team, and I know firsthand the type of training and capabilities that they have. This is about transportation, and you know, a lot of people will complain about rail traffic, but then we need to look at why we have rail traffic. It's because we've vilified pipelines. Pipelines are much safer, much efficient, much more efficient, and much more environmentally-friendly than probably moving things by rail. So I think if we, if we look at our representatives and recognize them for the understanding that they may have about certain industries, and then they can understand who is best to regulate that, and I would say that the Waukam County government is not equipped or have the expertise to be able to handle those regulations, and they should fall on the people that do have those expertises.
Candidate Ellenboss, we'll start with you on the next one. Water supply rights and quality will continue to be countywide concerns. What actions would you recommend county government take to ensure a safe, reliable, and adequate water supply for all uses in Waukam County, especially during the summer months when demand is at its peak?
I think the most productive thing we could do is look at science, look at real science and not political science. If you went to the, if you went to the Planning and Development Services and said, "I'd like to build a house," and they said to you, "Okay, well, we're going to need to do a wetland study," and you said, "Oh, I have one here. It's from 1985," they'd laugh at you. They'd say, "No, no, no, bud, that's too old. We need real, fresh, up-to-date science." The water quantity, in-stream flow data we are working with is old. It's from, the little bit that's there is from 1985. I think the best thing we could do is probably invest in some real, good-quality science that could guide policy that is, that is helpful and productive instead of, instead of possibly driving an agenda.
Candidate McLendon?
I would definitely agree with my opponent's point about science. We definitely need that. The, currently, we're working on groundwater modeling to understand how groundwater moves under the ground and also influences in-stream flows and vice versa. There's actually a lot of work being done on water. We have a plan. It was developed by stakeholders, a broad selection of stakeholders, and then it was kind of put on the shelf, which is unfortunate. We need to, and to get to a specific, we need to be looking at water efficiency, particularly in the ag, because that's where most of the water is used in the summer.
We'll start this next question with candidate McLendon. How can the county achieve its goal of protecting the agricultural land base in the face of continued demand for non-agricultural or residential development? Explain your position and provide any specific policies you would advance.
So our goal, our planning goal for the county is a critical mass of 100,000 acres of ag land in order to have a big enough viable ag community, economy here. And we don't necessarily have that much ag land zone that way, but we do have a huge amount of the best farmland-zoned agriculture, and that protects them from the pressures of residential development. We also have transfer of development rights or purchase of development rights, and it's in the process of being reworked, but what that does is, if we identify land that we want that's not currently zone ag, but we want to make it, preserve it in ag, then they can trade their development rights for that protection.
Candidate Ellenboss?
When I was at Huxley to finish my degree, I wrote a paper on this exact topic, and it was titled, "Is Planning and Zoning Helping or Hurting Our Pursuit of Protecting 100,000 Acres of Ag Land?" So I don't have enough time to fully address each issue in it. I should post it on my website so you can see it, but I think the fundamental thing is that we also, we go at it as protecting farmland, but we also need to protect our ability to farm. One of the biggest issues we're going to face is our aging population of farmers and whether they can transition to the next generation. And as someone who looks at themselves as the next generation of farmer, I've walked that walk. A lot of the issues in land use policy are things that are meant to help but actually hurt, and I'll give you one example, the 40-acre minimum lot size. Farmland in Waukam County is upwards of $30,000 to $35,000 an acre. That's $1.2 million. I don't know many young kids that can afford that, and the financing isn't available.
Candidate Ellenboss, this will be for you. What initiatives would you like to see the county take to improve racial and gender equity for those serving in county government?
Racial and gender equity for those serving in county government?
Serving in county government.
Okay. I haven't heard that there's a big issue with racial and gender equity for those serving in county government. I like to think that we have a good and respectful and fairly diverse community, and as long as we keep electing people that are cognizant and aware of the benefits of diversity, of ideas, of background, of experience, then we can be confident that those values will, you know, show through in the policies that we bring forth.
Candidate McLendon?
Well, I certainly support affirmative action, making sure that our government reflects our communities in broad strokes. I don't know, as Ben said, I've not heard of any particular concerns in that regard, but you know, I think about specifically, and this doesn't necessarily get directly to your question, but like the county health department has, is involved with, working with the local school districts, and they're, they're very much on the front line of making sure that gender and particularly LGBT... that gender and particularly LGBT and racial equity occurs in the school district, at the school district level, and the county is helping with that.
So candidate McClendon, this this next one will be directed to you first. Waukam County residents have twice rejected a jail tax to construct a new jail. What do you believe is the best approach to addressing issues with the current jail?
So I have toured the jail. I believe that it needs to be replaced, but we need to be real clear about what we wanna replace it with. I think the consensus of the people who interact with the jail, that being the sheriff's department, the people who work there, the prosecutors and the courts want it downtown and I think that's very doable. I've been, I've attended and for the last year or so, the incarceration prevention and reduction task force meetings and I've been very impressed with the work that they're doing to reduce the jail population, basically trying to reduce the some sixty percent in the jail that are pre-trial so that we, when we just figure it out, we will be building a smaller jail.
Candidate Ellen Boss.
So we've been talking about this jail for years and years and years and it's almost, it's kind of like a school bond to me. I think you've got a couple of issues. One, you need to have the right project for the right for the community and whether we've had that or not, the voters say we haven't. Another thing I think you need to have is leadership that you can trust, will do what they say they're gonna do once you vote in the money to do it. And so I think it's it's long past time that we address it. Like Natalie said, a great portion of those people in that jail have never committed a crime or have never been convicted of a crime, excuse me. And, you know, they're we're all people and that facility is very much so inadequate. So I would like to see the people trust our their representatives and then I think our representatives need to bring forth something that fits the community and once we do, we'll get what we need.
Candidate Ellen Boss, we'll start with you on this one. What are the most important things the county can do to attract new business?
Not do what they've been doing. I think that new business needs to have certainty that they're going to clarity, they need clarity. Everyone needs clarity in what they're doing. The prob, I've been the guy on the other side of planning and development staff looking for a permit and I've seen that you get a different answer with whoever you talk to. And businesses are the same way. I'm sorry, but I I'm not gonna invest ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars on a conditional use permit. So I don't know why we're expecting the industries at Cherry Point to invest billions of dollars on a conditional use permit. We need certainty, certainty isn't there, affordable housing isn't there for people's employees, so I don't blame companies for not wanting to locate in Waukam County. Until they can have certainty, we may not see what we wanna see.
Candidate McClendon.
So I don't actually think we need to be attracting businesses. I think we need to be helping current businesses here in Waukam County to grow and and add employees and be able to increase profits. We have enough people here, we have a housing shortage and we could we could go try to race to the bottom and and get Amazon to move here and get offer them all sorts of discounts on their taxes and whatever, but what about the people who are already here? It just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So, you know, we we need to look at how we're interacting with the businesses that are already here and find out what they need to grow their own business.
Candidate McClendon, this will be our last question, we'll start with you. If elected, what would you make a personal priority to get accomplished during your tenure and why?
My number one issue is climate change and transitioning to a clean energy economy. We have a, the county has a climate action plan that was developed in something like two thousand and seven and basically put on the shelf. We do a lot with those planning and shelving things. We need to, we, the committee has been reconstituted recently and we need to work on all of those issues as much as we can. We have a, we have a short timeline and we can do it if we all work together.
Candidate Ellen Boss.
I think the most pressing, it may not be my the thing that my pet project or whatever, but the most pressing issue I think we're facing right now is the uncertainty that the these comp plan amendments at Cherry Point are gonna bring to our community. And the first thing I would like to do is is make sure that that gets resolved to a point that we can continue to have a thriving community into the future. Because when I close my eyes and I envision what these these comp plan amendments could bring to the city of Ferndale, the surrounding area, and all of Waukam County, it's it's not good. I can't think, losing losing what what those jobs bring to our community would be devastating. So that'd probably be the first thing I would focus on.
Okay, we will now have our closing remarks and candidate Ellen Boss, you go first.
Okay, since this is our last, Natalie and I's last forum, I just, I love to have fun. I like to have fun in everything I do and I wanna thank Natalie for, you know, being a wonderful opponent and and having fun with me up here sometimes. I know that sometimes maybe I I distract you, but thank you. And thank everyone for having us. You've got a clear choice. We've got a lot of self-proclaimed activists on our council, an overwhelming majority, so you've got a choice. You've got another self-proclaimed activist or you've got some experience-based solutions. I would ask you to look hard at the candidates, look hard at, don't don't get mirrored down in national-level politics, look at the candidates' ability to solve our local issues and I would encourage you to vote for Ben. Thank you.
Candidate McClendon.
Thank you, Ben. I have enjoyed sitting up here next to you, talking about issues. Yeah, I'm a self, self-proclaimed activist, but I think so are you. Your your issues are just different. We wouldn't be running for office if we didn't consider ourselves somebody who wanted to push push issues. I have been honing my leadership skills for almost thirty years and, as I said before, I want to ensure open, assessable, fair process for all who participate and to go out and talk to people about what their issues are. We have, I've talked to thousands of people in the in the district and I think that I am the right person to represent the the people of the coastal district because I will be out there working every day on their behalf. Natalie McClendon, Waukam County Council, appreciate your vote.
Please join me in thanking the candidates for being with us today.